Welcome, everybody, to the special meeting of the City of Delray Oaks City Council. Today is Thursday, January 7th. It's 5 o'clock. Karen, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Lintell?
Here.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Here.
Councilmember Shirley?
Here.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Here.
Mayor Kerr?
Here. What I'd like to do is go out for public comments on matters not appearing on the agenda today. The public may come out on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be no time limit, or there, excuse me, there will be a time limit of no more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. So we're, we have a timer today that we're going to be playing with. So what I'd like to do is ask if there are any public comments on items not on the agenda. I see Emmero So. There we go. Although I don't see the timer, Randy. There we go. All right, Emmero So, please. You need to unmute yourself. Emmero So, I am unable to hear you. Randy, could we start the clock again, please? While he is figuring out his volume technicalities, is there anyone else with a public comment about something not on the agenda? See none. I'll go back to Emmero So. Have you been able to figure out your sound? We can see you. But we can't hear you. You're muted. Can you talk? You're unmuted, but your volume is off. Can you check the volume of your computer? Okay. Well, if you don't mind, we need to move on. If you figure it out, let us know.
Did I figure it out now?
There you are. Yes, please. Randy, if you could start the timer. Thank you.
I only need 45 seconds. I was on the website, I was on the website a couple of days ago, looking for the agenda, and you still have the old board listed up there. It had been updated. So you need to get everybody's face that's on the city council and just, you know, up on your website. That's all.
Thank you. Any other public comments on items not on the agenda? Okay, I'm going to close public comments and move on to what we're here for. New business council member appointments to regional boards, committees, and commissions. Can you see the slide?
Yes.
Okay, great. So what I want to do is review the slides that I put together, taking into account all the various factors going into the recommendations that I have put forward. So. So what I wanted to show, and there have been questions about why I called a meeting in the beginning of January. I wanted to show the various boards and their, their dates of meeting. The four items with asterisks are the ones that their main person from the previous two years has rotated off. So if you'll notice, we would, if we waited until the Delray Oaks City Council meeting, we would miss the first eight out of 10. So that's why I put that slide in here. There were a couple of caveats that have been listed on the, the regional boards recently, and I just wanted to provide some context for those. The mayor's water authority was disbanded this year, so it is no longer a, for consideration. The city select committee is only for mayors, so I wanted to take that out of consideration. Monterey Bay Area Insurance Fund, I contacted their executive director, and it is for staff. So Dino goes to that, and Jeff in his debt. And then the last one is the DRO Finance Committee, that is a special committee that the mayor appoints three council members to. So we're going to talk about that in, in a slightly different context than the others. So to take into account any potential Brown Act violations, the, our acting city manager, Hoin, reached out to every council person and asked for the appointments that they would like to be considered for. And these are the requests that got back. I want to thank, in particular, Scott Donaldson and John Gagliotti for saying that they're available for any. That way, what I was able to do was to give those that did request their preferences, and then we filled in from there for our two councilmen. So, so if you see, I requested Monterey Regional Waste Transportation Agency for Monterey County and Monterey One. Councilwoman Lintell asked for the MST, Seaside Sanitation Communities Human Services. And, hang on just a minute, I can't see my full screen. And then Councilwoman Shirley asked for, in order, Monterey One Water, Monterey Regional Waste Management, and then Ambag. Former Councilwoman Louise Getzel had been on the mosquito abatement board. She reached out and said that she was interested in continuing. I reached out to their executive director, who has stated that the mosquito abatement board is not necessarily the most hot topic. And when there's council members that are on the board that are effective, he'd like to retain them. So he said he would love to have Ms. Getzel continue to represent the city. I would only consider that because she was a, an immediate past councilperson. It's not something that I personally would like to continue for a long period of time, but I think in this case, you know, based on the will of the council, I told her that I would put her on this. So taking all of that into account, I was able to give everyone that requested something their choices or some, actually, all of their choices. So, hang on just a second. So these are the appointments that I am suggesting, that I am putting forth for the council to consider. It worked out very nicely, actually, that myself, Councilwoman Lintell, and Councilman Gagliotti, who have two more year, or actually, two or more years of experience, get two positions and then two alternates. And the new council people, Donaldson and Shirley, get one each and two alternates. And then I've also suggested Louise for the mosquito abatement. And the alternates were based on, so for example, myself, Councilwoman Lintell, and Shirley all got one of their choices and then alternates for their choices as well. And then coming back around to the city finance committee appointments. I think it is critical, especially for brand-new council people, to be very familiar with the finances of the city. All of our decisions are made taking that into account. And so to understand the, the scope and the nuances and the limitations, I feel is very important, which is why I am suggesting, the three of us, I will refer to Alex on this, but according to the code, I can simply appoint these. I don't believe these need to be voted on, but I'll leave that to Alex. And then lastly, we, I wanted to have a discussion about a proposed rotation of vice mayor. We don't have a lot of activity that involves a vice mayor, but it's imperative that we have somebody identified in case the mayor cannot attend a meeting, cannot run a meeting, or God forbid, something were to happen to the mayor. So what I would like to propose is going in order of, dare I say, seniority. Councilwoman Lintell has been on the council the longest, and then John Gagliotti. And Scott Donaldson had more votes in his bid for the seat than Kim Shirley, so that explains my rotation. And then, of course, on year five, it would go back to Ms. Lintell or whoever may take that position. So. That is it for my slides. And so what I'd like to do is ask Alex, can we go in any order? Can we discuss the vice mayor first? Do you have a preference?
That would be at the pleasure of the council, the order of these things to be discussed. Or I should say, at the pleasure of the mayor, the parliamentarian.
Okay. So what I'd like to do, unless everyone is not, if anyone is not okay with it, is to begin with the vice mayor discussion. And what I'd like to do is start with the council and for any questions or comments. So let's start with Councilwoman Lintell.
I think that's a nice way to do it. I like the idea of the seniority, because I think the experience is very important. And so, yes, I think that's good. Thank you.
Great. All right. Councilman Gagliotti?
I agree. I think it's an interesting, it's an interesting change-up. I totally agree with it.
Great. Councilman Donaldson?
Yes, I feel exactly the same way. I think it's a great way to do it, and I see no problem with it.
Okay. And Councilwoman Shirley?
I think it's a great idea. It's fair, and it's, yeah, that's a nice change-up. Thanks.
Okay, so let's, how about we go out to the public? Anyone have any comments on a proposed vice mayor rotation? I am not seeing any hands. So I will come back to the council for any last-minute comments, or I'll entertain a motion.
I move we establish the new vice mayor position as recommended by Mayor Kerr.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Councilwoman Shirley, and I heard a second by Councilman Gagliotti. All right. Karen, can you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Lintell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. All right, vice mayor proposed rotation kicks into account. Alex, do we need to prepare something in writing so we remember this next year and the year after?
We certainly can. Staff can prepare a document, otherwise it's captured as a minute order in the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. And again, if there's no issues, what I'd like to do is discuss the city finance committee appointment. According to the, our code, it does say I can just appoint special committees of any three members. Alex, if you need to know the number, it's 2.04.180 special committees. It says the mayor shall appoint special committees, which shall consist of a public safety committee of three members, recreation and parks committee of three members, public works committee of three members, and a financial committee of three members.
And then it would be the mayor's prerogative to go ahead and make that appointment. I've got to tell you, the Muni code I always have pulled up for meetings right now is frozen, so I'll take your word that that was a recitation.
So I would like to, Councilwoman Shirley did request it and knew about it, and I just want to make sure that that is okay with Councilman Donaldson.
Yeah, that's absolutely no problem.
Okay, great. Okay, so now, let's get in.
Excuse me, I've got my hand raised. I, is, are you sure it's limited to three people?
Yes.
Because I think it's important. Louise Getzel was on it previously, and I think it's good to have one member of the, the, a resident, other than a council member, on that committee. I would like to see her, and also, that gives representation in the Oaks, which we don't have any currently.
So I will refer to Alex. This, it does simply state three members. I, Alex, any insight on that?
If it says three members, it would, it would refer to members of the council. If it's referring, as opposed to, you know, citizen or at-large or something like that, my reading would be that a member would be a member of the council. And, and to Councilmember Lintell's point, because there's three, they will all be Brown Act meetings, which I think the city's chosen to make them Brown Act meetings anyway. So former council member Getzel has a way to participate that way as well.
She would participate as just public rather than be on the committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so let's move on to the regional boards, and let's begin. So Alex and I also discussed, Pat, do you still have your hand up?
No.
Okay. No worries. So how the ordinance when, or was written, is we need to look at the proposal and vote on it before any potential additional motion or, or amendment. So taking that into account, what I'd like to do is start with Councilwoman Lintell for comments.
Okay. There were just a couple that I would like to see changed, and that would be the Ambag. I would like to see Kim Shirley as primary and Scott Donaldson as alternate. And Monterey One Water, I would like to see Scott Donaldson as primary and Kim Shirley as alternate.
Okay, do you have any, anything else?
No, those were my only suggestions.
Okay. And alternate and primary. Okay, Councilman Gagliotti?
No, I don't really have any comments. I'm, I think, I agree, actually, with, with Councilmember Lintell's recommendations. So I'll be supporting that.
And Councilman Donaldson?
Yeah, I feel pretty good about the entire slate, but yes, I would like to talk about those two items as well.
Would you like to talk about them now?
Well, if it's now or before we vote, depends on when you would like me to provide my input.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we go to Ms. Shirley, and then we go out to the public, and you can come back?
Sounds good.
Okay. Councilwoman Shirley?
I really like the appointments that you made, Mayor Kerr, and so I, I would, I would gladly take the M1 position as representative. I feel like I would, I would represent the Delray Oaks residents well with that, as well as the peninsula. I know it's, it's an important position for, for everyone as well, and I've made my positions well-known on that, including answering the questions from residents, which is in the packet. So I've been speaking on this topic for a while now, so I think everyone knows where I stand, and I'd be happy to accept that.
Okay. Any other comments? Sure, Kim?
Uh, no.
Okay. So let's go out to the public. Anyone have any comments? What I'd like to ensure we're talking about the original suggestions. Let's go out to the public. So I see Ken Rutherford.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I support Kim Shirley as the original on M1 Water. I understand that Councilmember Lintell is suggesting that Scott Donaldson be the primary on that. And frankly, I have reached out to him and have not heard anything back. I would like to know more publicly where he stands on some of the issues that I've raised. I was disappointed that he didn't reply to my email that I sent out. I spent a lot of time and effort trying to stay on top of the city business. So I think Kim Shirley, because we know where she stands, she's answered our questions, she's publicly commented, I think she is the proper choice for that board. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Schreiner. Excuse me. Ms. Schreiner?
I'm sorry, I was working on my meeting. So, yeah, I'm here tonight as also the president of the Board of the Marina Coast Water District. And I, I did sign a somewhat water-wonky letter created by our staff, consultants, and legal representation of the Marina Coast Water District. And, but I also want to just say thank you for preparing a process and holding space for this conversation. I would like to support Mayor Kerr's recommendations for the regional boards. And there has been a question about the regional input, such as myself on a Delray Oaks issue. This decision, this question would be more logical if this question did not include regional boards, like the M1 Water, TMC, and the Regional Waste Management. If Delray Oaks would like to participate in regional decision-making, then people around the region are impacted. And we have seen a person with a very galvanized position that has been prioritizing a proposal that threatens the main current water supply of my community of Marina, as well as future proposals on the Ork community. So that's why I really want to support someone who has the ability to further evaluate and represent Delray Oaks on all the projects. And I believe would be for M1 Water, that would be Councilmember Shirley. So thank you for allowing this input, and, and thank you for your process this evening and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Schreiner. Ms. Wan?
Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. While comments were made that I live in Malibu, I'll explain why I'm concerned here. I was a coastal commissioner for 15 years and twice its chair. This city has its power, in its power, the ability to make or break a major decision that will affect the coast. And I believe that Councilwoman Shirley is the right choice. And I want to thank Mayor Kerr for being willing to do what's right and stand up for this city. To enable Mr. Gagliotti to oppose the pure water Monterey expansion by reappointing him will create, in my opinion, an environmental disaster for the coast and an economic one for this community. This city needs a representative who represents and reflects the views of the city and works cooperatively with its neighbors and Marina Coast Water District. What is particularly troubling is that the statements Mr. Gagliotti made at the end of the testimony last time were full of misstatements of fact, half-truths, and made-up issues specifically designed to confuse people. I don't have time to go into the details of what he said. And I know that Marina Coast Water District has sent in a factual response. But the fact that he felt the need to do what he and say what he said is a testament to why he should no longer represent this city. The only ones who will benefit from a totally ill-conceived project will be Cal-Am and its investors, not your residents, and certainly not the coast of California. I urge you to put the interests of this community and the coast of California but before any individual's interest or those of Cal-Am. It's a new year and the right time to turn your involvement with M1 Water into a positive, working relationship that will be of benefit to the city and to the coast of California. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Clark? Jim, give Randy just a second. Okay, there you go.
I'm muted. There we go. There we go. Hi, Mayor, council members. What I would like to see is the following. The Delray Oaks Council to pick from council members Gagliotti, Donaldson, Shirley, Lintell, or Mayor Kerr, the best qualified person to be on this board. I'd like to have confidence that the decision is not based on popularity or on the one that sends out the most emails, or the one that had some of their campaign financed by Public Water Now, or their sex, or their race, et cetera. Simply, the best qualified. And I'd like to see those that bark the loudest about transparency in an effort to get elected or get their person elected, apply it to themselves in their publications. Simple things like acknowledging the fact that there was the county, Salinas, and Casterville that voted against ratification as well, not just the representative from DRO. You know, just simple things like stating all the facts, not just a partial truth. And I personally don't want this to turn out to be another ghastly mistake like back in 2015 when we had the San Clemente Dam. That would have a storage capacity of 1,425 acre feet if we had just allowed it to be desilted and earthquake-retrofitted instead of torn down. Tearing down that in the name of the Steelhead Trout to the tune of $83 million. And according to NOAA Marine Fisheries Services, their surveys in 2016, 2017, and 2018, a grand total of 123 Steelhead Trout have traveled upriver. Doing the math, that choice that we made has been worth $522,012 per Steelhead. I just don't think that was the best choice, looking back. And lastly, I'd like to see this be discussed without personal attacks against any individual, but rather put in a positive framework of who folks are for, regardless, as long as they're the best qualified. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim. Tammy Jennings? Tammy?
Sorry, I'm talking and I didn't unmute myself. I apologize. I support your recommendations, Mayor Kerr, and I want, I would like that known. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, excuse me. Mary Solcang?
Hi, my name is Mary Solcang. I reside at 14 Hillwell Place in Delray Oaks. And I believe that Kim Shirley is the best qualified council member to sit on the And I believe that Kim Shirley is the best qualified council member to sit on the Monterey One Water Board. So I support your original recommendations of Kim Shirley for Monterey One Water and Scott Donaldson for AMBAG. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solcang. Dennis Alian?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, the slate looks really good. And I wanted to applaud you for your idea for the vice mayor. That was something that I objected to was, not that I didn't respect the decision, but I thought we needed to rotate. And so that's a very good thing that you've done there. The other comment is that I wish we would have actually had heard from the council members before you came out to the public. I hope maybe you'll come back because I'd like to know a little bit more. I know very well which, Kim has answered a lot of my questions. Thank you very much, Councilmember Shirley. And Scott, in conversations with him, I understand, but his, and I got to tell you, there isn't a whole lot of difference, actually, between any of you people. With John, he had very good reasons for what he was doing and he believed very strongly in it. I don't object to John's positions so much as the way it's been portrayed by outside agencies. The thing that sways me is that Mr. Donaldson, in his campaign, he raised his money internal to the city. From what I can see from the public records, Kim and Gary and the mayor all got substantial money from both the Public Water Now organization itself and its supporters. So I'm just a little bit concerned that they are going to, that influences how those people would vote. And that's why I think Scott, who walked around the city and talked to residents, knocked on doors. I know the other campaigns did that as well, but Scott got most votes. He seems to represent a bigger portion of Delray Oaks than either Kim, now mayor. You did good, but you only had one competitor. So we can't, so that's the only difference there. I just think we need Scott on this board. I would have liked to have heard what he had to say in public because I think it's going to be, you're going to find out that he's very much the way. And my final comment is that I've come a long way on this Monterey One Water Pure Water Project. And I'm of the belief that we need to, this is, I don't endorse DSal at this point. There are some technology improvements that are coming along that are going to change DSal in the very near future. But Pure Water Now Phase Two probably ought to start down the road and we ought to go there. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Krieger?
Yeah, there we go. Okay, thank you. And first I got to say, I dig the clock. That's very cool. Thank you. That's a great idea. Just a couple of things real briefly. My first comment was that, when I looked at this, what came to mind was that Kim has been involved in all aspects of water over the last couple of years. I know that because I've been there too. She's shown up at Monterey One Water Board meetings. She's shown up at the Water District Board meetings. She's participated in so many different things and her views are public, they're consistent, and she's always been willing to engage. And so it's a very known quantity what we're getting with Kim. And that's not as true for the other candidates. I was happy to see Scott support the expansion of the recycle water. And I'm really happy to see that the city is taking, listening to, and making change. That's a very positive thing. And that's great. Really, really applaud that. But I would just say, Kim has been, and I would say that she has been so involved in this, she really knows the intricacy. She doesn't have to go and get up to speed. She doesn't have to go see people and get smart about it. She's pretty there. She's been doing it. And as was noted, she's done it on the record. She's answered questions. She's ready to go. Just a couple of things that I want to address real quick that came up. Just the Public Water Now, let's just be clear. Public Water Now came to me and they also came to Kim and the mayor. They came to us because they liked what we said. They didn't come to us and give money and then we decided to start supporting expanded water. They came to us because our views were public. We put them on our websites. We talked about them. They were very, very out there for everyone to see and know what they were. And Public Water saw that. They liked that and they supported us. So that's, to imply anything otherwise is extremely disingenuous. And just one comment about best qualified, it's also representing the interests of the city. And that is, like you said, we're doing that. By making this change, we are going to be addressing the interests of the city. Delray Oaks, as we all know, we've talked about many times, was a huge supporter of Measure J. And this is going to go a long ways towards respecting that from the residents. So thank you. And let's look forward to hearing more from, in the discussion that the council is going to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Bartow? I'm flipping through, looking for you.
Yeah. Okay, now I think, now, now can you?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I agree pretty much with what Gary said. I've lived in Delray Oaks since 1974 on Los Encinos Drive. And I've followed pretty closely the water wars that were, all during my time here, we've had water wars. And it's been very, very frustrating. And I'm really greatly encouraged that we now seem to have within our grasp a solution that is realizable and will keep us from being fined for overdrawing on the Carmel River. And it's a lot less money, $200 million over 30 years versus a billion. I just think that makes a lot of sense. And the fact that Kim is supportive of that makes me recommend that she be chosen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartow. Any other public comments? Karen Harris?
Mayor, City Council people, I'm a resident of Delray Oaks on Rosita Road. And I'm interested in the process tonight and hearing how the applicants for the different boards are, or feel like they're qualified. I'm excited to hear about the reason why Councilwoman Lintel and Gagliotti and Scott feel like Scott should be qualified, the best qualified, for the Monterey One Water Board. I haven't heard much from Scott. I was happy to see that he was supportive of the Monterey One Water and Pure Water Expansion project on his campaign literature, but I haven't really seen anything more from that. But I think having this public process where we listen to the candidates, and I guess you call them candidates, appointees, prospective appointees, and hear their talents, qualifications, why they feel like they're the best qualified, and what their stands are for the different policies and goals, and what they intend to accomplish while serving on the board. So having this public process, I think, is really important. And I'd like to look forward to hearing from each one and all your city council and why they are choosing the way they are. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Melody Chrislock?
Hi, Melody Chrislock, Public Water Now. I support Mayor Kerr's recommendation of Kim Shirley for the Monterey One Board Representative. I appreciate Scott Donaldson's effort to get up to speed on our water issues. I talked to him at length. I know he's sincere about learning. I still don't know where Scott stands on moving the Pure Water Monterey Expansion forward. And I do know where Kim Shirley stands. This is such a critical issue to the whole peninsula. I really hope whoever takes this seat knows that. There's certainly no one trying to hide the fact that the Salinas Valley Voting Block on the Monterey One Water Board has voted against the expansion. I hope those of you that are pointing that out understand why. The Salinas Valley gets 700 acre feet of water from Cal-Am's DSal subsidized by all of us to the tune of millions of dollars a year. It's a very unfair situation, but the farmers and Scott Supervisor Phillips want this to happen. And so they've been blocking the expansion because it is Cal-Am's DSal's only competition. This was the whole reason for blocking it, believe me. Behind the scenes, this has gone on for over a year. So I do want to address the fact, and second, what Gary said about Public Water Now supported these candidates in DRO because we knew where they stood, not because we went to them and asked them to stand with us. That was not anyone's intent. We knew what needed to happen for the best interest of the whole peninsula. The trouble is, many people don't understand what's gone on behind the scenes and why there's even been any hesitation. So their one vote, that one vote of DRO is the vote that will move this project forward. Because right now, it's an 11-11 split in their voting of weighted, their weighted vote, weighted voting. So it truly is, in the best interest of the peninsula, Public Water Now is in no way some kind of special interest group. We're made up of the citizens of the Monterey Peninsula who don't want to be price gouged by Cal-Am by building this DSal plant. It's a simple truth of the matter. So any accusation that we're some kind of special interest group or PAC is quite ridiculous. These are your neighbors. These are your friends, Public Water Now. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Melody. Anna Thompson?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Anna Thompson. I reside in Carmel. And I support Mayor Kerr's recommendation to appoint Ms. Shirley as a mayor and to the Monterey One Water Board of Directors. I think she's the best qualified. And I do also want to make sure that we get somebody on the board of the Monterey One Water that is most qualified. Yeah, I don't have anything against Mr. Gagliotti, and I'm not here to defame him or do anything against him. But he has taken a position that is contrary to what is best for our communities. And he has gone out of his way to make a whole list of reasons why we should not certify, or they should not have certified, the expansion SEIR. So I do believe that it's to our best interest, to all our communities' best interest, to recycle as much water as possible. That is the most feasible. It is the most affordable. That is the most environmentally safe. And it's best for everybody. Why would we want to discharge to the ocean much water that could be recycled? Why would we want to do that? I don't understand why. That's the most sustainable water supply that we can have. If we need more water later on, we could develop some other project that is for the whole region. But it's a sin, in my mind, to discharge into the ocean water that we use, and it's a single use. That's not the way to go about it. So I'm so pleased that I helped you appoint Ms. Shirley to be a director on the Monterey Water Board, Monterey One Water Board, because she's the better qualified to be able to choose the right option for us. It's not that I have anything against Mr. Gagliotti. He's a very pleasant man. I wish I did not have to come here and talk to you about it. Because if he did the right research and he did not make some really wrong assertions, falsely assertions, I wouldn't want to be here. I don't want to spend my time in this. I wanted to have people that do the best interest of our communities. So.
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Frederica?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm appreciative to read Kim's answers to the questions that had been submitted by the residents and making them available for all of us to review. I'm appreciative that she's made herself available to us, to the constituents of Delray Oaks. And I would just like to say that, Mayor, I support your recommendations that you set forth. And I also am pleased to see your idea as far as rotating the vice mayor position. And thank you and best of luck to all the council members and mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Emrosso? Okay, there you go.
Can you hear me now? All right. My name is Michael Bear, and I was a middle school math and science teacher for 10 years, North Monterey County Unified School District during all the 1990s. And my kids called me Mr. Oso. Oso is a Spanish word for bear. My last name is Bear. They call me Mr. Oso. When I first got onto Zoom, I was unsure of it. I put this in. I don't know how to change my name. So that's why I have a new name. So what I wanted to say, I've been thinking about it since, you know, since the regular meeting a few weeks ago. You know, we're asking, a lot of people on the peninsula are asking you to be a good neighbor. And so, you know, there's six other cities within the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. And so as a group of, five other cities, Marina's the seventh, but as a group of six cities, we're trying to solve regional water problem. If Measure J passes and we actually buy out Cal-Am, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District becomes the California Public Utilities Commission. They become the regulating agency to set the rates. And the Monterey Peninsula then gets to vote for who is on the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District Board. Right? And those seven people who live in our community will set our water rates. And the PUC will disappear because they're really a bigger part of the problem than Cal-Am. And the question about the DSal plan, is it going to be a liability or an asset on the books when we buy it? That will be decided in court at that very end. So I want to support the recommendation of the mayor that I saw on the slide. And I just want to talk about the $200. How much time do I have? Oh, I see. Okay. Public Water Now gave $200 to the various candidates. I, as a water activist of seven years, but not really, you know, I don't claim Public Water Now, gave $100 to each of them too, because we need them, you know, to solve our, help solve our water problems. They understand the problem. And so everybody said good stuff and I'll leave you with 15 seconds. I yield back. Happy New Year, everybody.
Thanks, Michael. I don't know if you noticed, but I changed your name.
Thank you.
So it's magic. Alexander Henson?
Hello, yes. I am a resident of Carmel Valley. But I have served as the president, chairman of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. And in that capacity was charged with trying to provide water. And in that capacity was charged with trying to provide water for the Monterey Peninsula. And that obligation was owed to everyone on the Monterey Peninsula because we all depend on the same water supply. So I think it's really important for each of the communities to think about that in terms of these positions. And I think that Kim Shirley has demonstrated both the knowledge and capability of, of serving in that capacity. And I, I think it's important to recognize that the past representation by Delray Oaks has been critical in impeding further water supply development, not in furthering it. And I have to say that any decision that is made that is not in furtherance of a community water supply at this time really is hard to reconcile with what's in the public interest. So for each of these reasons, I hope that you will appoint Kim Shirley to that position. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? I'm, I'm seeing, oh, I'm seeing Phil Wellman. Mr. Wellman?
Yeah, right here.
Okay.
Phil Wellman, Carmel. A, a word that's, that's been used considerably this evening in terms of the candidates, as it should be, is qualifications. And from what I've seen, I, I've been involved and I was involved in some advertising campaigns for a couple of folks who are running for positions on the water board. And it gave me an opportunity to have a look at, you know, many of the other candidates in this area and how knowledgeable they were about the water issues in this area and how much experience they had with those issues. But I think that there is another issue. I had an opportunity, several opportunities over the last couple of years to attend Monterey One Water meetings. And often the issues there were issues of collaboration, issues of communication and the inability to oftentimes clearly articulate points in such a way that there was a shared understanding. And I think the, I, I just want to say that I just strongly support Kim Shirley. I'm sure Scott Donaldson has the knowledge. I'm not sure whether he has the experience. But one thing I do know about Kim Shirley from watching her, extremely knowledgeable. And as Melody said earlier, that was the reason that Public Water Now reached out. And also a considerable amount of experience with these issues. But one of the things that really sort of stood out for me was her communication skills. How incredibly clear she is. You know, she can take the knowledge that she has and she shares it in such a way that it gives people the opportunity to see all sides of an issue and make the best choices. So for me, that, that's always, you know, clarif, you know, clear communication always wins. So I very strongly support Kim Shirley for the position with the Monterey One Water Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wellman. Any other public comments? Now's your time. Well, this time. All right, we're going to come back to the council. And what I would like to do is start with Councilman Donaldson. If you have any particular statements you would like to make, they're, you know, it's up to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do have a statement that, and I would like to speak to not only the council, but everyone that is here participating. And first off, I'd like to recognize and thank some of the people. Some of them are on the call right now, but they allocated a lot of time and helped me to gain a better understanding of the entire situation. I, Melody, Chris Locke has already spoken and we, we got to spend some time together. Catherine Stedman and Chris Cook from Cal Am, Dave Stoll from the Water Management District, Tom Moore from Marina Coast and Paul Shudo from Monterey One Water. And in addition to the time that they spent with me, I also dedicate a lot of time and effort to reviewing and analyzing reports, studies and other related documents. And I know there's a lot of concern and a lot of emotion with this entire situation. And, and, you know, it's to be expected. But I don't think it warrants the treatment that Councilmember Gagliotti has had to endure. And honestly, I find it unfortunate. But when emotions run high, I know a lot of people like to accentuate the differences between people and organizations. And what I like to do is look for common ground. And after spending time with the individuals I mentioned, and I, I found that the organizations actually do have a lot in common. And really, I mean, they're focused on meeting the demand, the water demand on the peninsula, doing it in a sustainable manner and also minimizing the environmental impacts. They just want to go about it differently. The critical choice or the critical decision that the council has is identifying who best represents the desires of the citizens as we pursue the solution. And I recognize that there was overwhelming support for Measure J two years ago. But I think that the best indicator just happened recently with the election, where over or nearly 92% of our citizens voted. We had three highly capable, well-funded Public Water Now candidates. And if this city wanted to have a Public Water Now majority on this council, then I wouldn't be here right now. I appreciate John's service on the board. He's smart. He understands the complexity of the water situation. And he has a lot of conviction, particularly in the face of a lot of adversity. But I think it's time to get a fresh perspective. And I believe I'm the best choice to provide that. I'm impartial. I have no relationship whatsoever with Public Water Now or Cal Am. I, I don't claim to be more knowledgeable than any other council member, but I'm committed to increasing my knowledge and expertise. And I'm a good problem solver who listens. You know, during the campaign, I advocated for the recycled water project. And that has not changed at all. And in my heart, I want that to be the solution. I've studied the supply and demand analysis and I've listened to the opinion of experts. And I believe it can get us there. I think it's time that we move the SEIR forward. I know that's only the beginning because I'm sure there are going to be roadblocks along the way. But I'm, I'm equipped to find solutions and do it in an impartial way without any undue influence from any organizations or individuals. The other thing is I'll maintain a focus on environmental impacts. I'm concerned about the health of the aquifers and the basins. And I'm worried that we're operating in a, in a deficit. And that has a direct impact on Delray Oaks. A lot of people don't talk about it. But and our ability to develop our Fort Ord property. Many of you know that we were sued by Land Watch not long ago related to water supply, water issues that are supplied by Marina Coast Water District. I believe that responsible development is critical to the long-term viability of the city. And, and, and this, this solution will allow us to do that. I hope this gives you a better perspective of who I am. And I hope that I can get the, the support from the entire council for this appointment. And with that, I'll send it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I'd like to go to Councilwoman Shirley for the same opportunity to share some thoughts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have been working on this water issue for a long time now. I remember going to M1 Water meetings when we actually were in the board meeting and not on Zoom. We have been standing up for the expansion of Pure Water Monterey for a long time. I say we because it was myself, there were as many people within our city as well as everyone on the peninsula, because this is something that connects us to everyone. And, and it's a very important topic. And so I followed that, that issue. I've spoken to the Monterey Regional Water Management District or Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. I've also spoken in front of the Coastal Commission. This is, I've, I've spoken in front of our Delray Oaks City Council before on this issue. This is something that's been very important to me. And I've made it known to people. Everyone knows where I stand. And that's exactly why Public Water Now reached out to, to Gary and I. This is something that is, I, I view as one of our most important issues. And I was willing to stand up for it. We need to move forward with this for those reasons that it's the most environmentally sensitive. It's, it's going to be the least expensive. It's just what is needed on this peninsula. And everyone has known that that's where I stand. Nothing has ever wavered. This is the, I, I have to say, this is, I'm happy to hear Councilman Donaldson. That's the first time I have ever heard him speak about, verbally speak about where he stands. And I, I just feel like history has shown that everyone knows exactly how I will vote. And I too am a very good listener. I like to ask lots of questions. I think people know that about me. And I feel like I have earned the right to be on that board. I think everyone knows the way I will handle myself. And I, I, I hope that I can, I can have the votes necessary for that. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. So let's go out to the rest of the council. Councilwoman Lindtow.
Yes, I, I feel that what Scott has provided us with tonight should alleviate any concerns that any of the folks spoke to, tonight, recommending Kim Shirley. I think Kim would be a good alternate. But I see as primary, I, I'm supporting Scott Donaldson.
Okay. Councilman Gagliotti.
I don't really need to add anything more than what Scott has said. I mean, I think that he was very eloquent. I think that he touched on all of the concerns that were raised by the comments in public. And, and the, the, the one key thing is, is his independence. I mean, that really is the differentiator here. I mean, Kim just basically said that, look, I'm, I, my position has been known and I'm going to go in with that position. And Scott has said, I'm still, I essentially think similarly, but I'm still open and I'm a problem solver. And I think that's exactly what's needed. I've been actually accused of being just as strong in my convictions as basically as Kim. And I don't, and, and I think we've all kind of seen that the two poles are not necessarily where our best solutions or our best democracy needs to reside. I think that, that Scott was extremely eloquent in one, proclaiming and owning, you know, his popularity. He was overwhelmingly voted over the, the other two council candidates. And I think it was because he, when he talked to our Delray Oaks residents, he conveyed exactly what, what he said to us here. And so for that, I mean, I, I think that, that is the reason that I'll be supporting him is, is in, is in his words.
Okay. So the reason I, a couple of the reasons why I put Kim up for this recommendation is A, she expressed interest to me. B, she has been active in the water community for a long time. We all know it's very complicated and it takes a long time to understand the nuances. She has a leg up frankly, in my mind, with the knowledge of, of the various aspects of our water crisis and the issues. And lastly, her transparency. I appreciate the answers, the thoughtful and well-reasoned answers she put forward. And to have them included in the packet, that enthusiasm, that knowledge and the willingness is, and I've worked with her. I know what she's like and I know how she digs into things. And I will be standing with Kim. So on that note, any other comments before I, I just want to come back around to remind everybody that we are voting on the appointments as I suggested them first. And then we can move forward however the council sees fit. So I will.
But one, one point of order, and it's a, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
And this, it's a, it's a, I mentioned Alec. Alex, you're on mute. Is, does this vote have to, have to proceed? Or can one put forth a, a substitute motion?
So the, the way the ordinance reads, and again, I apologize, my, my muni code is, otherwise I would quote it to you, is frozen. It says, you know, sort of, the mayor has the first crack at this.
Okay.
If that fails, then others are then.
That's, no, I just want to understand. Okay, that's fine.
To put forth their, their suggestions. Yeah.
Perfect.
On the mayor's suggestions first will be proper.
We, we, Alex and I and Jeff and I have had a lot of conversations about the best way and the cleanest way to move forward on this.
I agree.
Thank you for the question. Yeah, yeah. Which is why I purposely mentioned it early on. Any other comments? Okay, I am happy to entertain a motion.
Motion's already been made and seconded, right?
I, no.
Oh, sorry.
I move, I move to approve the regional board appointments as suggested.
And I second that motion.
All right. Karen, can we please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gagliotti?
No.
Councilmember Lindtow?
No.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
No.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes. All right. So 3-2, it does not pass.
So if I may?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and make a motion then to make the following recommendations that we, basically we just swapped the Ambag and the Monterey One appointments. Donaldson is primary on Monterey One. Kim Shirley is alternate on Monterey One. Kim Shirley as a primary on Ambag and Donaldson as alternate on, on Ambag.
Can you just wait?
Excuse me? Somebody's not muted. Okay, so Councilman Gagliotti, what I'm hearing is as suggested, with the exception of swapping the primary and the alternate on Ambag and Monterey One.
That's correct.
Okay.
Oh, let's see. I need to raise my hand.
No, you don't. It's okay.
Okay.
Would you like a second?
Yeah. No, I have one question before I comment. The, it's not swapping the, on the Monterey One Water. It's not swapping the primary and alternate. It's putting Donaldson as primary and Kim Shirley as alternate.
That's right. That, that was, that was the motion.
Okay.
Okay. So it's not, it's not swapping.
I'm sorry, but well, for Ambag, go ahead, Mayor.
For swapping.
Yeah, exactly.
Swapping, but the Monterey One is Donaldson primary and Shirley as secondary. And I vote yes on that.
We need a second.
Okay, I second.
Okay. I would like to offer a friendly amendment.
Sure, I'll listen, I'll listen.
What I'd like to do is offer Kim Shirley, I'd like to swap Kim Shirley and myself on the Monterey Regional Waste Management District.
Okay.
She wanted, that was her number two choice, and so I want to, you know, offer that to her. Councilwoman Shirley, that would give you two. But I know, you know, the Monterey One Water Board is a lot of work, and so I want to offer you that swap. So Alex, is it cool if I ask Ms. Shirley if she's okay with that?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
I'm okay with that swap.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
And I accept the amendment. And Pat, you would have to also, does the second, that's the question, is the second?
I second the amendment also.
I guess, Mayor, if I could, I guess I need some clarification. So what you're proposing then is on the Regional Waste Management District Board that Councilmember Shirley becomes the primary, you're the alternate, is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
So, yeah, so what I want to do is I want to go over everything, but Ms. Shirley, do you have something?
Yeah, so if I, if, let me see, so if I want to, if I say if I agree with this, then, then I'm on the Waste Management, yeah, okay. No, I don't have a question. Thanks.
So Mr. Aliam will go out to the public in a moment, but I need to make sure that we're very clear about what the motions are and what we're moving forward on and what you're going to comment on. So Alex? Excuse me?
Say, I'm sorry, Mayor, but it's Dennis. The Monterey Regional Waste Management District does not accept alternates.
Okay, thank you. So on that case, that, that's odd, but, okay, so what we're moving, what the motion is, please make sure that I'm absolutely clear. We're moving forward with the appointments, as is with the exception of swapping the primary and the alternate for the Ambag Board. Everyone, please mute.
Dennis, you're not muted, sir.
Thank you. So Ambag, we are swapping Kim Shirley and Scott Donaldson. Kim Shirley will be the primary, Scott Donaldson will be the alternate. Monterey Regional Waste Management District, Kim Shirley will be the primary, and apparently there's no alternate. If in case they do, it would be myself. And then lastly, the Monterey One Water Board would be Scott Donaldson as the primary and Kim Shirley as the alternate. Everybody?
I agree.
Any questions? Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second, and I'd like to go out to the public. So let's remember, this is on these particular appointments. So any public comment? Ken Rutherford?
Yes, I just want to say that I've asked the council to reconsider their supporting of Scott Donaldson for the M1 Water Board with his statements. Again, I think that Kim Shirley has shown that she is responsive to the residents of Delray Oaks, and my experience over the past year is that Mr. Donaldson, while always congratulatory and thankful for our input, tends basically to ignore us. He ignored me again on this matter, and I think it's just going to be more of the same on M1 Water. And I would just ask the council to reconsider their support of Scott Donaldson on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jan Schreiner?
Thank you for a second opportunity. The, I found it interesting that there were some statements about the best qualified, and there was also the admission on the part of Councilmember Donaldson that he really has not been involved. And so I wonder if there might be any comments from our council members about how they would define qualifications, if it is not educational background and experience, what would be the qualifications to be seated on a regional water board? And if you go forward with Councilmember Donaldson being your representative, I just really hope that he understands the threat to the groundwater, the threat to the water supply that would be intended for future Delray Oaks projects. And to keep all the options open that are currently available to Delray Oaks, going to need to keep your options open on the water. I just want to emphasize that, especially to whoever represents Delray Oaks. But in this case, where it looks like you might be choosing someone less qualified, that they really understand the threats of the water supply and future of Delray Oaks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Schreiner. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, Anna Thompson. I have the same concerns as the prior speakers, and I think that the fact that Ms. Shirley is up to speed to understand everything that is related to the water, water situations, and the fact that she's clear that she recommends, and she's in support, the expansion of Monterey One Water, doesn't mean that she's partial and she's not open to choose the best solution. So I think that to assume that Mr. Donaldson will do a better job because he's more open, I think is not correct. She arrives at that conclusion because she did the homework, and she analyzed all the possibilities and all the options, and that's why she's the most qualified, because she, the first time that she would be already knowledgeable of everything. She does not have to go and do additional research to bring Mr. Donaldson up to speed. So I think the best thing will be that Mr. Donaldson will be the alternate, and Ms. Shirley will be the member, the primary. Okay, that's my recommendation. I hope that you guys can reconsider that, and do not assume that Ms. Shirley is not capable to arrive at a very objective solution that is best for all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Dennis Alian?
Thank you again. So, again, it's just very troublesome to me that, for example, in the year, we had, I think there were 11 correspondents came into the city for inclusion in this package. At the last meeting, there, Public Water Now and their, and people that support it, dominated the conversation. We're talking about the city of Delray Oaks. Scott Donaldson has just told you that he is very open, he understands these issues, he's done a lot of research. I think Scott is the right man for the job, right person for the job. We got to remove gender from everything. The, he's the right person for the job, and that, I don't want to have this decision made with, with any angst towards anybody. And it's very clear to me, as we listen to these various comments from people outside their city, that they haven't kept up with what's going on. There was no discussion about John Gagliotti being on this board, and yet we heard these people continue to rant about John Gagliotti being on the board. John is, John is not a factor. So it's disturbing to me that there's so much focus on this Public Water Now group of people that, about the SEIR. You've heard Scott say, he's looked into it, he's studied it, he's had extensive conversations with people on this. Just because Kim has been involved in a long time, I think it's great. I think, I think she'd be an excellent alternate, but we need the impartialness of Scott Donaldson, who represents the majority of people in Delray Oaks. Thank you very much.
Douglas McKenzie?
Hi, actually, it's Alice Green. I work on the same computer here. I just wanted to say that I agree with everything that Ken Rutherford had to say. And the reason I support Ms. Shirley for that appointment is for exactly what he said. She not only has done her homework, but she's responsive. She, if you ask her a question as a resident, she answers it. And unfortunately, and I'm hoping this changes, I would like to see Mr. Donaldson start to do that and be specific, not just say, I understand the issues, what does that mean? That's about as vague as it gets. Anyway, thank you very much. I really appreciate the time.
Thank you. Karen Harris?
Mayor, city council people, I wanted to share that I appreciate Scott, you speaking out and listing your qualifications, your passion, and why you feel like you're the best candidate, and listening to the other city council people explaining why they support their various appointees, especially for the Monterey One Water Board. I want to express that because somebody is, had the popular vote, does not mean that they are more qualified for a certain board. In my opinion, the person that is more qualified is the one who has been the most engaged, and that person has been Kim Shirley. She shows up at the meetings, she reads the council, I mean, the board packets all the way through, she meets with the people, she goes, she understands the issues from every angle. And I haven't seen Scott honestly do that. I adore Scott, you know, I like, I love you. I just don't feel that you're the right person for that board appointment. I feel that being impartial is important, and if you say that Kim is not impartial because she supports the expansion project, well, Scott has said the same thing. So are you saying that they're both impartial, not impartial? That reasoning doesn't make sense. So as you, as city council people, continue tonight to make your best choice, consider what's best for our city. We need water for our expansion projects in Fort Ord, and that water, the best source of that water is that expansion project. Don't gamble with our city's future. We need somebody who knows the issues, that's going to represent our city, and I know that's going to be Kim Shirley. And I think Scott would be a wonderful alternate. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Richard Fettick?
Hi, good evening. With all respect to Scott Donaldson, Kim Shirley can hit the ground running and get the job done sooner or faster, and there is a, there are time constraints. That's all I wanted to throw in. I think you guys are great, you're doing a great job. Even, even this city council meeting is better than many others that I, I've attended of other cities. I think, even if, even if Kim Shirley's not on that board and it's Scott Donaldson, I think he would do a great job. But Kim Shirley, I think, could do a better job faster. Thank you very much for your patience with this.
Thank you, sir. Melody Christlock?
So, once again here, I'm just curious why there's all this antagonism toward Public Water Now, as if we're not being objective. I mean, there are two sides to this. There's the public side, and the public's welfare, and Cal AM's welfare. Those are the two sides here. So yes, Public Water Now is not on Cal AM's side. We're not on the Salinas Valley agricultural side. No, we are on the peninsula's side, on Delray Oaks' side, on your side. So I don't understand, Dennis, why you keep acting like we're the villain here, like we're influencing people against their will. Public Water Now is representing the views of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District and of the Marina Coast Water District. We've worked closely with both of them. That's where our information comes from, that's where our views originate. So, you know, maybe you can just have a little more respect for all the work that Public Water Now has done to try to move a water solution forward for this whole community. And no more of this, oh, you're not objective, and you're not impartial, and this is just nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. Either Douglas or Alice?
It's me, Douglas McKenzie, 16 South Sidoo. I'd like to speak to a procedural matter. I don't have proof for this, but it certainly appears on the face of it that we have a Brown Act violation here, in that it appears to me that Pat, John, and Scott got together before the meeting somehow, serial communications or otherwise. That's my point, thank you.
Teresa Alian?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to vote and put my two cents in. My husband has been, of course, part of the city council for many, many years, and sat on many water reviews, and was on one water and all the others. He has listened to and been very objective in his views, and sharing his comments with all of you tonight. I support Scott Donaldson 100%, and I support him because I saw the, who backed Kimberly Shirley, Allison Kerr, for their appointments and how much money you received. And I feel that that justified Scott Donaldson. He was totally impartial to what happened in this election, and we need an impartial and a very wise human being, and I feel Scott Donaldson is the right man for the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to come back to the council. Okay, I'm going to start with Pat. Last questions, comments?
No, I have no further questions. I think Scott, as John said, Scott spoke very eloquently and explained what his positions were, and he's a very capable person, and his past history has shown he's a good, a good leader, and so I strongly support Scott Donaldson.
Okay. Councilman Gagliotti?
I just find it kind of interesting that the, the definition, what seemed in the last rang of public comments was, the most qualified is those who supported the best or the most by Public Water Now. And there was a lot of congratulatory, kind of, I would say, words for Scott, but there was always the but, you know, you're not as qualified because you weren't supported by Public Water Now. And and I think if anything, that makes that that makes this vote for me that much more true. Uh, and and I also thought it was funny, humorous, that so many times I've heard that you know, the voters have spoken and now we have a mandate. And and tonight, when that doesn't work for, you know, to to prove a certain way, or it doesn't go in the certain way, that all of a sudden that gets dismissed. Um, so uh, I mean, an overwhelming majority of people voted for Scott. Scott was not backed by by uh, by Public Water Now, and I find that actually, the true measure of the acceptance of Public Water Now for the, from the Delray Oak citizens is is that because Scott basically ran his own independent campaign and knocked on doors and talked to people and expressed his opinions and and did his homework. Uh, I mean, we we heard that too, that that Kim has done her homework, she has, she's very, very thorough in her homework, and so has Scott. Um, and and in terms of both of them hitting the ground running, uh, I think that that's a, that's a tall order. It's it's going to take a lot longer for both of them, either one of them to to get in there. I mean, there's a lot of information that they've gathered, and that's great, but there's still tons more that they're going to have, that they're going to to learn. And the both of them are capable of doing it, but Scott was overwhelmingly elected, um, or his numbers were overwhelmingly elected, uh, and he ran an independent campaign, and I think that that's that's why I support him for this.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Councilwoman Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I I just want to point out that I really recognize the importance of this water decision, not only for Delray Oaks, but for the entire peninsula long, long ago, and that's why I got involved. I saw the, um, I I saw that I wasn't happy with the representation we were having in Delray Oaks. And so that caused me to get involved. And I spent a lot of time uh, learning the issue, talking to people, attending meetings, hours and hours of meetings, and I've been in it uh, the entire time. Um, I I requested this position, and it would seem that if anyone else, you know, if you honestly do feel like the expansion does need to move forward, then it seems like you should be very supportive of my position. Because I've made it very clear for for over a year now. I've said it vocally, I've talked to people about it. Um, clearly, our city is interested in having an expansion project. Uh, Mayor Kerr promoted that, myself, I did, Gary, Gary Krieger did as well. Um, and so, of course, and and Councilman Donaldson, you you said it in your campaign materials, but I've never before this time even knew um, how you verbally felt about it, because you never said. So um, yeah, no, that I I would agree that our city believes that this is an important issue. Um, I don't, you know, and Mayor Kerr certainly promoted this issue, and she won in a landslide. So I think we should be honoring her, her, you know, her her votes on this and her her thoughts. So um, for for that reason, I'm I'm not going to be supportive of of this motion, so, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Um, so first and foremost, we all agree that this is a critical regional issue. Um, that said, I am disappointed in the treatment of guests into our city. Um, I think because it's a regional board, it's a regional issue. Uh, it's not just about Delray Oaks, otherwise, we shouldn't be on regional boards. So first and foremost, I want to welcome everyone um, into the city of Delray Oaks. There has been a history of of um, not being welcoming, and I have worked really hard to change that. So that is not okay with me. Um, the next thing is I want to acknowledge that uh, we're moving in a positive direction. We're having conversations about um, having a new uh, representative. Now, you know, depending upon, you know, what side of the the street you walk, depends on who you're going to support. Um, I, for all of the reasons discussed, Ms. Shirley is, in my opinion, the one that has been shown interest, has been doing the work, um, and can hit the ground running uh, from the get-go. So um, I I believe uh, Councilman Donaldson can do a good job, but I think we need somebody in there rapidly um, to be able to uh, get up to speed. And then lastly, I want to um, share my appreciation for everyone showing up this evening. I know that there was a lot of angst about having this vote early. Um, but I appreciate it because we have a very busy January, and I, it's important to me that all of our board appointments are are posted in this timely manner so we can all start and with our colleagues. So on that note, um, we have a motion and we have a second, and unless there's any other discussion, we'll do a roll call. Any other discussion?
Yes, can can we make it clear exactly what we're voting on before we vote, please?
Yes, so Karen, can you read it back or as you understand it?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me get there.
Okay.
Okay, you're um, swapping Ambag, Donaldson and Shirley. Primary and alternative. And Monterey Water, um, make Scott Donaldson primary and Kim Shirley alternative.
And we're also swapping um, the primary and the alternate for the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, but apparently there's not an alternate on there, so let's um, double check that.
I have that.
Okay.
And I will double check if there's.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is that clear, Patricia?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Any other questions before we do a roll call? All right, Karen, please.
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Aye.
Councilmember Lintel.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
No.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Uh, no. All right, so three, two, passes, I want to thank everybody for the um, time spent and the forward movement we've made. Um, our next meeting, our next, yeah, meeting date, a regular meeting date is January 26, 2021 at six o'clock. On that, we're adjourned, thank you all.
Allison, hi.
Ms. Lintel, yeah?
Yes, I I wanted to mention something that you called the special meeting uh, to present your your recommendation for board positions. And I changed my plans in order to accommodate you, uh, because originally I was not.
Thank you very much.
Um, but I, you know, I had requested at the last City Council meeting that you provide the council with your board recommendations in advance to receiving the packet. This time would be utilized greatly to review and assess the qualifications for each of the board members. And would have been beneficial to our city as well as as our community. And um, but you chose not to do that. You chose not to inform us, the council, other than when we received the packet. And I was really disappointed in you that you didn't um, help accommodate my request as I did yours. Thank you.
Thank you, all right, we're done for the evening, thank you.